...
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
The bowl?
Here.
Bowl?
Here.
Shield? Frozen?
Here.
You're shaking?
Here.
Here.
Sorry, I'm here.
Prayer by Mr. Luther Thomas. How much would it be?
That is prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we come together. We thank you for everyone serving on this board, Lord, and we ask that tonight you guide the things that go on here, that you make us aware that feelings can get hurt and just be with us and keep us safe in the days and weeks and months to come. We ask this in your precious name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The executive session held at 6:00 p.m. tonight to discuss litigation and legal matters. Your presentation. Chief, would you like to give the presentation?
Sure. First, I'd like to send an apology to Senator Kellingwood, make it, and Ms. Cat Copeland, that make it to you. I'll try to be brief for this meeting before it all, but I want to share some information with you. The mission statement of the Edison Police Department is, "The officers of the Edison Police Department pledge to provide professional law enforcement services, cooperate under philosophy of community policing, designed to promote a partnership with the community to ensure public safety, reduce crime, improve the overall quality of life in Eddie Stone. When there is a medical emergency within the borough of Eddie Stone, the Eddie Stone Police Department, Eddie Stone Ambulance Service, which is a basic life support unit, and the kind of nature of a call, an ALS emergency, are dispatched to a resident in need. On the majority of medical emergency, police are first on the scene. Our police officers possess the ability to administer Diloxone, basic first aid, and CPR skills, while waiting for the arrival of emergency medical units. These skills are helpful, but do not help to mitigate the majority of sudden medical emergencies. Presently, there are approximately 117,000 police agencies in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And one police agency certified by the Department of Health as a QRS, which is a quick response unit. A quick response unit, as defined, is a non-transporting level of EMS, and EMS agency operation, a QRS uses EMS provider to respond to calls for EMS and provide EMS to patients before an ambulance arrives. I'm proud to announce... I'm proud to announce that the Eddie Stone Police Department is the only QRS unit certified in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. What does this mean to our community? Our police officers are being cross-trained as emergency medical technicians. Our police officers will be able to provide immediate initial medical treatment at an EMT level and have access to equipment and medication typically found on a VLS ambulance, such as Diloxone, epinephrine, nebulizer treatment, CPAC device, glucometer, and oral blue pills. Our officers will be able to provide care for themselves in the event of being in the victim of a traumatic-related incident such as a shooting or a stabbing. Our officers will be able to provide initial care when the use of force is necessary to affect a lawful arrest. This initiative is not meant to replace our existing fire department. The Edison Fire Department and its members have served the stakeholders of this community admirably for the past several years, and that service will continue long into the future. This initiative is to provide the best quality of service to the stakeholders of our community in cooperation with the present fire departmental services. I have asked the members of the Edison Police Department to join us this evening. I am proud of each and every member of the department for the dedication and quality of service they provide to the community. In addition, I'm proud of their commitment to this initiative. All the full-time officers have completed their training and are studying for the final certification exam. The part-time officers will be trained and will be starting shortly. Sergeant McCallum will be the officer directly in charge of the new unit. And I would like to say this initiative would not be possible without the assistance of Officer Michael Bullen, who was very instrumental, Mike Ellis, captain of the Essington Ambulance Service, Pat O'Connell, county EHS director, Dylan Ferguson, director of Pennsylvania Department of Health, Bureau of Emergency Services, Bruce Egan, merger EMS chief, Richard Pescator, medical director, and the members of the Edison Police Department, the Edison Fire Department, council mayor, and members of our community. Thank you. I'd like to call to the stand Mr. Ferguson and Mr. O'Connell.
On behalf of the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Bureau of EMS, it's my honor, privilege, and pleasure tonight to award the certificate of licensure to the Edison Police Department in recognition of completion of all of the licensure requirements necessary under the escaping EMS Act to become a quick response service. The fact that the municipality, the police department, and all of the different organizations that the chief just mentioned were able to work collaboratively on a solution to be able to improve service to the community with a deep respect for the traditions that already existed is truly phenomenal. It is this type of thinking, these types of decisions, and this type of collaboration which is going to be necessary to ensure a sustainable future for emergency services not only here in Eddie Stone, but across our great Commonwealth. Chief, on behalf of the department, congratulations.
Do you want to get a photo? Just to ask for...
Sure. Can we get the officers?
Yes.
Come on in, guys.
Yeah, those glow lights are tough. Want to go the one this way? Just the case of glow lights are... Hi, man. I know he smells like a dog.
Take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Appropriate time. Sure. Now?
Meeting resumed.
Thank you. I was wondering, we had discussed it.
Yes. There was some... You want to explain what was...
There was some issues with plans. We asked for some for Bowler to look at them. We received them on Friday. We still have some issues to resolve with regard to zoning the Second Street extension. We'd like to get more information based on a list that I sent Max yesterday this morning and sent to Max on the second when it got back from the council. Our council is willing to do a special meeting, but we need to get some of those items resolved because they involve zoning.
They involve zoning?
Yes. Pardon.
Will you set up a special meeting, please?
Thank you. Can we get an official list of these questions?
If you want me to do a formal review, we asked for plans we sent to our office yesterday, copies, and we were told that they weren't completed as of yet, so they cannot be sent. So if you send us a full set of drawings for us to review, we will certainly do that and then get this on a schedule. On Friday. Friday afternoon.
That was a deal. We all agree. We didn't get any comments, so I asked for a settlement after we had responded. Blind side of truth. What's that?
That's not...
Max, we weren't trying to blindside you by any means.
It's not what we agreed to work together, Paul. I've never heard of something issued until right now.
What was it, these pardons? Do you want me to read the list to you?
This is the list, and it's not all of it. It's not comprehensive because we do not have a copy. We don't have the plans. Now, we could have... What we could have done is done a review of the plans that you presented a month, a week ago. That's where we received the plans. Okay? So we had a little review. When we saw that the entire area, other than the buildings, was flooded, should there be a flood? We sent something to Bowler asking them to look at it. As I explained to you this morning, we did that so that we didn't want Bowler being embarrassed in front of their clients to allow them to do what they needed to do. Okay? That being said, I asked Alex yesterday, because we had done them Friday afternoon, to go through them, do a first review, so that we can make a decision to see. However, the plans don't have enough information on it. Right now, you still don't have... Has your server ever been out to establish the medium-low water line?
I'm not going to debate you on that.
I... But these are the things that we need to have on plan so that we can make the appropriate decisions. It's not anything new. We've been talking about being a low-water line and where that property line is for months now, Max. This isn't... Should not be shocked.
It is true.
Well, I'm sorry.
Clearly, we're surprised, right? We're all here. Okay.
Order 667, quality of life and violations ticket process. Version made in second to... Table 667, which is the quality of life violations ticket process. Some of the language has changed in ordinance number 668, which is the commercial registration inspection, which needs clarification. The store partner? Yeah. For those who may not be aware, our... Our Novi Baro has been awarding the motion made... I'm sorry. Motion was made in second. Motion was made in second to table the ordinance as of last month?
Yes.
All favor? Aye. Aye. Disagreed? Aye, sir. Go ahead, Beth. I have no... Our Novi Baro has... Council, I'll repeat the invitation that I have already sent out to all the officials that are hopefully coming to work. Council of Baro of Eddie Stone, partnership with Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, quarterly invite you to the dedication of a state historical marker commemorating the Eddie Stone rightful plant, Simpson and Thirteenth Street, on November 9th, 2019, at 1:00. Now, this is from Road World Line, and it is also... It was, hopefully, we wouldn't have it on 11th and Simpson, but because of gas lines running under there, they are no longer going to be right there, so we have to move it up to 13th and Simpson. Now, the building that we speak of is where ShopRite is and where Walmart is. There are three separate plants owned by Bolton. So this is also... We're also going to mention that the historical marker is for the rightful plant, but it was also in the same area up there of the explosion 1917 happened with the shrapnel and black powder incident where, you know, over 200 people were killed, mainly women and young girls. So that will also be mentioned on that day. So after the event, after the marker, we're all inviting the residents to the Doghouse for arcade coffees or stuff like that. Okay?
What was the date again, please?
November 9th. 1:00. I thank my historical group. We'll be working on this Thursday night for the program and for flyer letter to put out to you. Hope to see you there. Making history with our marker. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Thanks for... Other comment? Dave Riley?
Hello, Dave Riley, 13th and 9th, uh, 9th Street. So, few questions for... It's a little fog that the Baro used to get in the fire department. Haven't received that in a few years. Are we going to receive that?
No, we stopped doing that when we started pumping out, let's say, hours.
Okay. Well, our trucks are now breaking down, and we were told, let the truck get worse if we're... Get fixed.
What's with that?
Best for the council. I was told by our chief, the cabinet, said, wait for the leak to get worse if we're... Send it out to get fixed because it's going to cost $8,500.
Andy was supposed to take it over and have Adam put in it, and the others thought all the radiator. Was that gone?
It was gone, and it sold the heat. It sold already.
It's the first time I'm hearing about it, Steve.
And supposedly, he called Baro and sold.
Nobody's contacted me about the truck, so... First time I'm hearing about it right now, Steve.
Well, he told us that it's leaving, and it cost $8,500, and it sold.
Is anybody else heard from Andy saying that the truck was still leaking? $500,000. So it's the first time we hear about it.
I was clearly listening to Bolton. So we have to tell about that radiator, not me. Okay. As far as him ever saying that is untrue, unfounded. I wish he was here so we could square this thing off.
He's not here, Paul.
I know.
So that truck was basically half-assed and get fixed? What they're saying?
It sold the heat and it sold already.
That truck, if that truck break down on fire, we're going to be liable for it, not you guys. So that can fix it.
That truck's applying water, it's going to get burned up inside. Breaks down.
Problem is, if we're not being told about it...
You guys weren't told about it.
I know. I was not informed at all. First of all, when I spoke to Andy about getting it all fixed, I told him, get everything fixed. He was asking about the radiator. The guy wanted $17,000.
So fix the radiator. That's the problem with the truck, radiator. So it don't...
But we go out with three quotes from anybody? No, we did not. We turned around, we're just going to go with the $17,000 quote. So we bring back three quotes with a little bit, you know, we have a competitive bid. They added the radiator to try to supposedly, to see if that would stop the leak. I was not told that it's still leaking. It's the first time I've heard of this leak is right now. So we can address the problem, but you got to bring it... We have to know about the problem first.
It would seem to me that would be something that they would bring to the borough manager, who's in charge of all those things, and the borough manager would then make sure that the proper people on council were informed. Since you guys are a legislative body...
I've been chair of that committee for many years, and I never had the borough manager to see for me.
That's right.
Andy has brought everything to me.
Because we've never had a borough manager since you've been doing that.
That is unfounded. Anyway, anyway, Andy has... That probably...
Sorry. 2019, uh, the EMS budget, I'm using 45% of the funds. What's happening for 51%? Is that the carrier being actually... I don't have a second.
We haven't discussed any budgetary issues yet. We'll have... You have any budgetary meeting probably for the next call.
And just a question, Ed, one. Now that you have the QRS, is there still just two tossers on?
Yes.
So what happens now that your EMT is on an ambulance call and is tied up with a patient for over seven minutes?
It'll be the same, uh, same... Same beginning strategy, do the officers title for the other call.
Well, he was not leaving before, right?
Before it was a medical emergency. We love to finish. A police officer is titled for whatever reason will be medical emergency or secondary call, but also will respond, available also respond with support services, which is down to the surrounding offices.
So you're putting a officer in danger of ease?
No, I'm just trying to say you're saying that, I'm not saying that.
What's that?
You're saying that, I'm not...
Well, the second officer can leave the patient for the ambulance.
But it's the same if you get three calls coming in, you have two officers that are ringing your call, not an ambulance call.
Well, it's...
If it's implemented, the officer couldn't leave the scene until someone else arrived at that.
No, that's not...
Yeah.
That's not that. No, it's not.
So they would leave before anyone arrived?
They can. If there's another officer, if there's an officer in danger, yes, they can.
You can say they can, but they do not.
What I can say is to you is that there's a variety of ways to release an emergency service response. When an officer or a university is tied up with an emergency plan, such as your employees as a contingency plan, if it gets tied up, fire department is a contingency plan. The police fires a contingency plan to respond if it's secondary.
All right. Anything else you'd add?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
I just hear the recorder on the parking. Eddie Stone, I have to switch. The placards are working out fine. We made orange ones so that they could be readily seen. And it worked out quite well the first couple of weeks, but then last... This last Sunday, there were no places in front of the church park, and it wasn't church members. So we don't really want to get anybody in trouble, but, you know, could we just issue a warning?
If we come by there and there's violation of parking, we should... And we should... I'm going to have to do a class someday. I'll go into it back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I wanted to talk about our annual audits, which we discussed before. As of right now, we are still two years behind in our annual audits. And I spoke to the Department of Community and Economic Development this morning, Center for Local Government Services. For the 2010 audit, it was put in 13 days late, and the 2011 audit was put in two, three months early. That was Francie Howard, who did those. Since Pacenti Consulting has taken over, the 2012 budget was one year late, the 2013 budget was a year and a half... I'm sorry, budget. I'm talking about annual audits. The 2012 annual audit was one year late, the 2013 annual audit was a year and a half late, the 2014 audit was two years late, the 2015 audit was one year. The 2016 audit was due 4/1/17, and it was completed 4/17/19, so it was two years late. And at the November budget meeting last year, Joe Pacenti said that the 2016 audit was complete. However, it wasn't submitted until about six months later in April. The 2017 audit was due on 4/1/18. The DCED said they had just notified the borough that they are delinquent on 2017. They had some numbers in the online form, but no audit has been completed and no report has been submitted. For 2018, which was due 4/1/19, the DCED has absolutely nothing, nothing on the 2018 audit at all. And of course, you have to do them all in order to be caught up. So the audit is not in progress, the audit is not completed, and no report has been submitted for 2018. Out of 2,500, 2,500 communities in the state of Pennsylvania, only 150 do not have the 2018 audit completed, and we're one of those two, one of those 150, and we don't even have the 2017 audit completed. Now, a year ago, Eddie Stone was one of only 16 out of 2,500 that did not have the 2016 audit done. So we have been behind on these audits continually since the 2012 audit, and in all that time, we have not been eligible for Department of Community and Economic Development grants. And that's got across this money, that's got to raise your taxes, that's got to keep you from having services. And those are facts, as somebody likes to hear. Now, my question is, since they have not gotten these audits done on time, since they have been here, why do we continue to employ Pacenti Consulting as...
For three minutes, you're on.
You have no authority to do that. My question is, why do we continue year after year to renew their $70,000 contract, plus giving them other work in addition to that? We're probably spending $90,000. Now, to me, it seems irresponsible to continue to employ a company that's not doing the most basic thing that you need to do, and in fact, the treasurer is not here to explain any of this. And in fact, the treasurer is not here to explain any of this, because the treasurer never comes to these meetings. So, that's, that's my say, I, I think it's irresponsible to keep year after year employing the same people that don't do the job.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Wilson, would you like to respond?
Yes.
Oh, then I will respond, say.
No, I'm not, I'm.
Director, I'm going forward, I think you have a statement to respond.
We're gonna have a discussion.
I just saw the being audit, ninety-nine percent of it was done today, which is not loaded up a lot on the DCED.
It's not done.
So, I, you're on the floor, it's my turn now, you spoke, I get a chance, I didn't interrupt you.
They said Sandy would have the letter tomorrow.
Sandy, uh, I think Mr. Haddad just reached out to Sandy for the letter, Sandy will direct the letter, and that finalizes twenty seventeen. And then Hannah's office will upload it onto the Minnesota stats, and then twenty seventeen will be done.
They've already started.
And I think, we, we've explained this before, the deadline of four, one, eighteen, they had their audit done, or four, one, nineteen, excuse me, they had the eighteen audit done, was used in the past to get your liquid fuel fund, which no longer exists. Long as you have four basic forms done, which you do every year, which we do for you, that you're done by ten, or the first, which is your elected official form, your tax information form, uh, your MS nine sixty-five, which is your liquid fuel report, the three forms. We get them done, you get your liquid fuel funds every year on time. The DCED report, which we actually just got a reminder, and Matt just reminded us that the eighteen report, audit financial orders, it's not due until twelve thirty, or twenty nineteen, briefly. So, once they upload this twenty seventeen, you are, uh, current at your office.
Um, that's not true.
If you, when you phone to a secretary at DCED, they just give you the facts, they don't give you the true information, when you talk to people, when you're doing it, you know the information. So, when, um, I'm sorry. Uh, but, you have to apply for a DCED grant to be, if you get red flagged, but sometimes when you go for a DCED grant and you have a red flag, your auditor writes the letter, they'll lift the red flag, it's gonna be a grant, you guys have to really plan for it. If you're applying for.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Pacenti has the floor, you are done speaking, you are.
You haven't applied for a DCED grant, and sometimes if you did, you would make the, the, the best of our steps to make sure you have been eligible for DCED. And with your audit not being done, that doesn't cause you to, that doesn't raise taxes, that's not the reason taxes are raised when it's not done.
Um, so when, when, when facts are, when, when, uh,
you know, the wrong stuff's out there, it's, it's just not true, that's the fact, right? Or it's, don't cause taxes to be raised.
If, if we don't apply for a DCED grant, do we, does that cause the borough to lose money?
No, it does if we don't, if you don't apply for the grant, you can't get the grant. If you're not eligible for the grant, you can't apply for the grant.
If we're not applying for the grant.
Mr. Wilson, have you gotten over half a million dollars in grants over the past couple of years?
Have you gotten any DCED grants ever?
We have applied for one, there is one pending.
Where, um, where, when did we apply for one? You're not gonna get it if you're two years behind, because they set, they, they keep track of that.
So what?
So what Mr. Pacenti is telling us is fine, if you find, if you find. The fact that you don't have your audits done is not gonna raise your taxes, but what's gonna raise your taxes is that if you have tax money going out of the borough and no tax money coming back from Harrisburg, because you're ineligible for these grants.
Well, tax money doesn't come back from Harrisburg, it comes in from the taxpayers.
It does.
Yeah, so if it goes to the Harrisburg, you live in any.
Do you think that the grants don't come from the state?
But that's not tax money, that doesn't pay off as a budget grant money, that's.
Where, where the state gets money, doesn't get money from our taxes.
But it doesn't get from your property taxes, property taxes fund the, uh, budget.
You're saying that.
We're saying that the. Real estate taxes do not fund the state budget.
Is that what you're saying?
I'd love to have that conversation again, to me, I, we can go all night with this, but real estate taxes fund the budget, not taxes that you paid to the stadium. So grants don't fund a budget, you don't put it into your budget.
Of course not, grants don't fund the budget.
Well, that's what you've been saying.
No, I'm saying that. When you get a grant to do something in this town, if you get an ARCAP grant or any other grant, that is money that is going to be less that you're gonna have to tax, less that you're going to have to borrow.
Sometimes grants are matching, too, sometimes we have to pay.
And if we get the ARCAP grant to be applying for, for the police department, we're gonna be another million dollars in debt, because that is only gonna be a natural fifty percent. No, it wasn't, you asked Bill, I wasn't okay with that.
No, you asked, oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And I tried to tell you, because he said, I said, the treasurer has Parkinson's disease, so, he is sick tonight, so he apologized to me.
He's never here.
So, when you have, when you have, when you have an ongoing disease with Parkinson's, it's tough to make yourself available anytime, so, I apologize, he's not here at seven o'clock meeting.
He apologized for not being, for being two years behind in the audits last year, and he's still two years behind in the audits. The fact remains, you know, the fact remains that you have not submitted the audit from time, and we're still. And Mr. Pacenti does not.
Oh, yeah, thank you for allowing me to respond.
Thank you.
Goodnight, Mr. Stewart.
Before I take the podium, just reach, first off, you know, I didn't appreciate the whispering comment that says that, uh, he's reading off of my cue cards, Mr. Wilson does his own due diligence. Secondly, I didn't appreciate the gesture of making it seem as if he was a puppet. Again, it was inappropriate, I was from your chair, in my opinion, to be making that gesture about a resident that has concerns and wants to take the podium. To set the record straight, I've gotten empty promises from Joe Pacenti regarding the completion of the audits. When I brought it to Mr. Pacenti's attention back in thirteen and fourteen, that he was all right on the audits, you know, he, he did make an effort to catch up thirteen and fourteen, however, in two thousand fifteen, during the budget season, he told me that he would have the fifteen audit done before the end of calendar year two thousand sixteen. And that audit just recently got submitted.
And when did you notify council?
Yeah.
Cause I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Stewart, I tell you, the last two parts of council, you have done nothing but art on these.
I think Mr. Stewart has the floor.
Apparently he doesn't, thank you.
Yeah.
So anyway, you have constantly had to limit this.
We, we were on the record at the, at the last council meeting, on the record, and I asked President Reeves on two occasions during that meeting, when do we anticipate the completion of the two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen audits? And President Reeves said those audits will be complete before the end of September two thousand nineteen.
And here's a question.
And here we are in the middle part of October, and not one of the audits is done.
The only one that I am responsible for, is you are under your administration, I'm already.
Seven members of the council are responsible for completing all of my.
You didn't do your job.
I, I am not responsible to complete the audits, I have nothing to do with it.
We have, we have, I personally oversee all the things on.
Order in the court.
That's your job, you didn't do your job. Like law.
It's not one member of the council that's responsible. Three members up. Let him talk. We've been talking for years, we've been talking about the audits for years, we've been talking about the audits for years.
It was not brought to our attention that it was.
I, I respect your, I respect your degree.
And it also was not brought up to, as Mr. Wilson has been aware of, that you brought to council the suggestion to remove Pacenti to council, and, and that was, um, declined by the rest of us, and I never, I never have, I never have. Sorry, Mr. Wilson, I did not have, that did not happen, thank you. You have, you have always held to yourself what was going on with this borough. I have, we never, never got emails from you, Mr. Stewart, of what was going on with our town, on our, soon as the president, he's got one, she informed us, that everything was going on. I can't tell you how many times two and four vessels were going on with the borough. How many, you have to read it.
Two and three, now, uh, you receive two and three emails in total.
What particularly?
You receive two and three emails in total.
Bring a hand, I want this, tell me what was going on in this borough.
I have, I have all the emails I've got, I have all the emails I've got.
That one's posted for our address, they were hacked.
They, you have your borough address, they're on the website, that's how we. Well, they take them off the website. You're talking about using your personal email, just like people got on Hillary Clinton's face for using her personal email on a personal search, you're all doing that. When there's a lawsuit, they're gonna come and get your files. The reason that I decided to address council as a resident and a business owner, as a postal councilman, is specifically to talk about the two ordinances that were along the docket that you passed this evening, which is ordinance six, six, seven, equality of life and violation tickets process, and ordinance six, six, eight, which is the commercial registration and inspection. First off, I wanna thank council for handling that ordinance, I have numerous questions, numerous comments, I believe that we do need to have further discussions before those ordinances are in a position to be passed. You know, however, I do plan on extending from the vote simply because of the, you know, the current business that I have here in town. But, three things, I believe, in my opinion, are important to make sure that we have a successful implementation of the ordinance. Now, number one, and this pertains to both ordinances, is to make sure that we're educating the public through some type of outreach. The one reason that I abstained from the advertise, or from giving Sandy permission to advertise the ordinance was because we never saw it. I didn't see it until last Monday, was the first time that I had an opportunity to see it.
I believe you're really coming here for it, we got it in our package.
They're in our package, they're in our package for the workshop meeting, they're not in our, they're, they're not in our packet currently for tonight's meeting, so any resident that's sitting here this evening who wasn't in attendance at the workshop has absolutely no clue whatsoever what's in this ordinance. We have a website, we could be posting the information on the website, even if it's just a draft ordinance, we've got a TV station, we could be posting information about the ordinance on the TV station. We could be going door to door with some courtesy calls from our code enforcement office, just to let the residents know what they would be expecting once this ordinance is, 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 is in place. It's, it's a pretty wide sweeping change of the way that we currently do business. Excuse me, Ben.
We haven't gotten her yet.
It was, it was scheduled to be passed this evening.
No, we were not, and we had to reread it, and then we came across a couple of things that we had concerns about, that's why we just stopped.
Council, 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 uh, councilwoman Hall, can you please read to me, under the.
I'll read to you, it was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda that we passed this evening.
It was beside beneath a table during our executive session.
Right, before you proceed, before you arrive tonight again.
So I was three minutes late, we already signed the table.
Things get discussed, let me get.
You must have missed it as well, because you.
I didn't miss it, but I do, we, we had questions as well, which is why I was tabled. This, we would not put something out like this, as far as the changes is, without educating residents or letting them know they wanna pull this out. Right, that's already been discussed.
Okay. So we have existing ordinances in place for issues such as high grants, we have existing ordinances in place when it comes to snow, we have existing ordinances that are in place when it comes to how we put our trash out. And the important thing is, is to make sure that we are either amending or repealing these existing ordinances in conjunction with rolling out this, this new ticket deal.
Bill, you don't have to, you don't have to amend the original ordinance, the original ordinance will stay in place, just the way they are. You have a choice, so either write the ticket or go by the original ordinance, you have the right to either rate a ticket, or if you don't wanna rate the ticket, then that ordinance gives you the opportunity to give me citations.
Not what the ordinance says, the order proposed ordinance says that we're gonna be amending all other ordinances.
That's why it's tabled.
That's why it's tabled.
The other issue is the, uh, the, the, the ability for the borough to either through their own forces, whether it's public workspeople to go out, and if someone's got high grants, they're gonna go cut it, they'll charge the resident, but we already have a service, a new service, that goes out there to do the, to do those types of payments. So we, are we discontinuing that service contract? The other issue is, is if you're gonna go out and you're just gonna rate tickets, we really need to have a full-time code enforcement officer that's gonna go out there and, and, and get those tickets, because it's gonna be a lot of work to be keeping track of, it's a graduated scale. This week I get a twenty-five dollar ticket, and next week if I don't correct the situation, I get a fifty dollar ticket. And two weeks later, I'm, I'm subject to a hundred, hundred dollar ticket, and, and it's a graduated scale, who's keeping track of? What a ticket was issued, what a ticket was paid, and what are you, Ella, or Ella?
We can talk about that list, that's also part of.
So this was all discussed in the three minutes that I was like.
Are we, are we, are we looking to hire a time code enforcer?
The other line was considered that when I had one concern is, we have, we've given the police department the ability to go out and do. Having it tabled and having those specific changes made are two entirely different things. I apologize that I was three minutes late to the meeting, and you made, you know, this executive decision, that we were gonna get rid of all of these things that I potentially have to serve with. So the police department is now, no longer going to be doing code marketing. When it comes to the business registration, my question is this, what information is going to be requested of a commercial business? When they fill out the form?
That's why it's tabled, Mike, because there's not enough information where it's. What you just said, why it's tabled.
So are we, are we gonna, are we gonna have an open discussion of what's going to be changed?
Sure, we're gonna.
Because we want, we only tabled it for one month, so we've got one more workshop meeting before we go to take action. And, and a lot of, a lot of the stuff that's gonna happen is, is we're gonna have to re-advertise the ordinance in its entirety. So there's gonna be the whole waiting period of the time that Sandy advertises it, which is gonna have to be, be at least a week prior to the next meeting, so we've only tabled it for one month. Is all of this stuff gonna be able to be resolved?
I don't know, Bill, are you gonna show up at a workshop meeting?
Sure, I'll be at the last workshop meeting, absolutely.
Okay, on time?
Yes.
We should all stay three minutes before you get there?
So you also say that the registration has to be placed or filled out on a form that's supplied by the park. Is the form available or not available?
I don't know, that's why I pre-tabled it, because there is no form, I wanna know what information is going to be on this form, what we're gonna ask, that's the whole idea.
So, so, so there's a registration fee that the business is gonna have, is the registration fee that the business is gonna be, that be paid?
That's a.
That is part of the ordinance, the ordinance says that there is a fee associated with the business registration.
With the C, with the C F, right, yeah, right.
It's, it's the same thing as a, as a, uh, as your rental license.
So there is a fee?
There is gonna be a fee, the fee, instead of being like the ordinance with the rental license, instead of being specified as it's set in the ordinance, we'll be able to vote on that as far as what that fee will be, uh, using a, um. Resolution to change the, uh, the fee, so that way, in two years, you can change the fee without having to change the ordinance.
Correct, yeah, but is the fee gonna be a flat fee, or is the fee gonna be a graduated scale based on revenue? I've got a small business with two employees, am I gonna pay the same hundred dollar fee as Penn Terminals, or, 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 or is Liberty Electric?
You, you pay the same, why, I, I have a duplex and an apartment complex, only page twenty-four.
Yeah, but it's, we're talking about business registration, we're not talking, we're not talking about.
You're still, you're still up for an inspection, just like anybody else.
And that, that, that goes into my next question, is what type of inspection is going to be required? I, you know, I own a food establishment, so I'm, I'm fully aware that at any time, my code enforcement or my health officer's gonna come in and take a look at the way that you handle it.
Yeah, I'll give you.
However, it's a whole different ballgame when you go down to Penn Terminals, or you go to Calavet, because the type of inspection that's gonna be required there, you're gonna have to have an expertise in doing a marine-type occupational health and safety, which right now, I don't believe any of our code enforcement officers have that ability to go in there and do that type of inspection. Same with Calavet, is if you go into the cocoa factory, you're going to have to have some type of an industrial health and safety plan. some type of an industrial health and safety plan. And, and then it opens up a whole new can of worms, in my opinion, with the borough liability and the fact that if we go in and we do a safety plan that says, yes, we've inspected you and everything's good, your employees are all safe, and next month there's a fire and God forbid somebody gets hurt, what liability falls back on the shoulders of the borough? Because if I'm Mr. Calibit, I'm gonna say, I just had an inspection and I got it off there last week.
Well, I think you, you got into it a little bit deeper than maybe what the borough would be getting into as far as inspection.
But, but these are things I believe need to be discussed upfront before we go put an ordinance in and, you know-
What? Did we discuss this was tabled?
I know.
Yeah, but we tabled it for one month.
Okay. So you got a whole month to bring up your questions and you get to work on this.
So, so when we-
We're done. Right back there.
So when we pass, so when we pass the ordinance, just to be clear, when we pass the ordinance and the ordinance says that, that, that it will be enacted immediately upon the Borough Council passing the ordinance and President Reeves signs the paper, we will have a ticket book for a code enforcement officer to go out and ticket someone for high grants or for, for having their, their trash out a day early or, or for not shoveling their snow seventy-two hours after the event. Somebody will be armed with a ticket book. And, and, and the resident will come up and be able to talk to somebody in the borough so that they can explain the whole purpose of them getting a ticket. Are you giving me that assurance that that is going to occur before Borough Council takes action?
No, I'm not even gonna have assurance that we're gonna have a ticket book sitting right there over your head. Just because you pass it doesn't mean you're gonna hand out tickets the next day, Bill.
According to the ordinance, it says it will be enacted immediately following the best of the orders.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean that somebody has to hand somebody a ticket.
But that's where you get into an implementation process or an implement, implementation problem.
And it could be tabled again. You've tabled many a thing and never gone back.
Never gone back.
What did I table that I never went back?
I'm sure this is a change.
Well, what did I, give me an example of what I, what I made a motion to.
I think we're in on track there.
Give me an example of what I made a motion to.
You're willing to interrupt.
Thank you.
Uh, I would ask him.
I think he should have been out of his way. And President, members of the, and his Borough Council. Borough Council may be denied, not a circus, anyway. Last month, I stood up here during the public comment, uh, instruction to address issues concerning uncompleted audits, which follow the, that's all.
This has already been discussed.
No, if you don't mind, this is my three minutes. I would prefer not to interrupt.
You're, you're, go ahead. Go, please.
We've fallen under the offices of Borough Treasurer, Jose Zenzini. As those audits have been completed and filed with the Department of Community and Economic Development, to be compliant with state requirements and to be eligible for DCD grants and loans, the first response from the Council President was that twenty sixteen has been completed and that twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen were nearly completed. But at that point, Council President noted that this time is for comments, and I was asking questions. So my comment for this month is that this is a public meeting and that as a resident and taxpayer of the Borough of Edneystone, I should be able to question any action or lack of action that takes place in these chambers. We operate in a democratic society, and as such, council is employed by the people and as such is charged with taking care of the business of the people, not business of council. In other words, you as a group, or work for us. This is not the fight them. Many of the actions that have taken place in this chamber are far from professional, lacking in common decency, and sometimes outside of the rules of order. And yet, you have the audacity to cite numbers of your constituency as being out of order as they try to make sure that your actions are within the laws of the common law, or above board. So, once again, I'm going to call for Council to fire, was it an A's? Hire a full-time council, full-time Borough manager. This should not complicate this business as usual. Thank you.
I was giving everybody a moment. Okay, I would like to respond to your, we are all residents. We are all people who live in Edneystone. We all care about what happens in Edneystone. We all live here. We raise our families here. What goes on in this town affects us just as much as it does you. We have the same concerns that yous all have. We are working towards it. As you see, there's seven of us up here. We don't all see eye to eye, as you see. Sometimes some of us see eye to eye, sometimes other of us see eye to eye. It's not always the same people that see eye to eye, but we try to work together for the best of the residents. That's what we are doing. Nothing happens overnight. There are lots in the works that we are working on, and we are doing that for you, for you and everyone else that lives here and ourselves as well. So thank you for your advice.
Get the audit done.
Everyone else as well.
Uh, Maria makes you shut up. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the, with the audit. So twenty seventeen will be done tomorrow. Sandy's gonna give the letter. And twenty eighteen, we have until December?
No, it's already like-
December.
It's already started.
That's not true.
It's already, it was due, it was rehearsed.
It's already, it's already-
First, I mean absolutely no disrespect to anybody in this room, but I'm gonna say this. Mr. Stewart, instead of worrying about the EMS and the life-saving qualities of town, you're worried about an ordinance that's been tabled. Correct? And I know this is supposed to be public comment, and I don't have any rules, so please kick me off and it's on the one. But this, I got involved because of EMS. I got involved because everybody's demeanor. This is ridiculous. Then work together, and if Mr. Stewart doesn't like it, I've been at these meetings. I opened up my mouth in November, and I've been here. And guess what? I haven't seen it except for election time. And again, I know that you're not up for it, and it probably doesn't matter to everybody, but the way you act sometimes and the way the council acts and the way the people act, it's awful. You people don't understand. Minutes matter. Good kudos to Pop, and hopefully it works. Everybody bitches on Facebook and your page, and everybody's making comments and talk to the town. Stop it. Get a chance to know your neighbor, your council people, the people that are running. I did. I yelled. I got loud. I got upset. I yelled at you. But guess what? I took the time. That's that, you know, for Stewart, even though he hasn't spoken to me since the election. But that's okay, because guess what? You gave me something that nobody else did. You got me to know the Democratic Committee people, you, the new candidates, current, current council, the new people down here. And it's shameful, shameful for all of you to act like this. You know, if I die right now, I pray to God that you roll me over to Chester so the ambulance can come get me. It's awful. You know, it's not funny. It's not. Because guess what? And I know that this really has nothing to do with you and the police because I do have respect for these guys and the fact that you did it. But when my dad got sick and had a heart attack in the home, your cops were there. But guess what? When something else happened, that cop left. And it sucked because guess what? If it wasn't for those guys, those eight guys in the firehouse, he would've been dead on the floor. So I hope to God that you guys do have some kind of plan. And I really hope that everybody in this room, because I've only seen a handful of you since that November meeting. It's shameful that you guys wanna bitch and moan on social media and talk, 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 but now you're here. Two meetings, for real. You of all people, as well. It's shameful. You never leave the house of your divorce, and that's the truth. And it's a shame because I'm sure you do have good ideas and good, um, record. I don't even know. I'm so upset with everybody. It's disgusting. Take the time to talk to people. God bless you. Take the time to understand. Don't friggin' just say, oh, they're horrible, they're monsters, they're this, they're that, he's crazy and everything else. Yeah, they might all be true. They might be horrible people. But guess what? Work together. Don't do this shit. And I'm sorry for cursing, and now I'm probably not supposed to do that, but I hope it's on the record because it's awful.
It's on the record.
Thank you. I just, it's, yeah, to me, I get the whole person.
I can simply call the comment. Is motion to approve the minutes of nine, nine, nineteen?
Person, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of nine, nine, nineteen.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you a question? There was, um, there was an executive session in the middle of that meeting, which is mentioned in the minutes that you debated there, somewhere between number ten and number twelve, I don't know exactly where. We broke for executive-
Above new business items. If you look, it says President Reeves announced the executive meeting. You're talking about the bump where we broke us during the meeting.
Yeah, we broke up because we agreed.
Also, Charlie's name has to be amended. Seth and I has to be why.
Could you change that mark or what?
Yeah.
With the E session? Here. Do you want to add anything more to it?
Well, I'm just gonna give the motion with the, you can just make your motion with the rest.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to accept something until it's amended. And that goes for the other one that has Mr. Stewart, who is our Vice President for October seventh, forty-seven minutes, instead of telling him about this, and her name is amended, have a Y and a I as well.
We can table it now.
Yeah, just table the minutes until the next one.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
We need a motion to table both of them. We need a new motion to table them now.
I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes for nine, nine, nineteen and ten, seven, nineteen until they can be amended with the, um, things that have been mentioned.
Motion being seconded. Table the minutes for nine, nineteen and ten, seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say it. Treasurers report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the-
I'm gonna read it.
The Treasurers report, September twenty nineteen, General Fund and Sharon Bank, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, year seven, seventeen. Sure Fund and Beneficial Bank, one fifty-four, nine thirty-three, oh, seven. But the fee and official bank, one hundred seventeen thousand, five ninety-two, thirty-nine. And the defibrillation fund and Sharon Bank, one hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-one cents. The total of all funds is seven hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four million.
Heard the Treasurers report, you're about to present, with your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasurers report for the month of September twenty nineteen. Add to the number-
Motion being seconded. The Treasury report for the month of September twenty nineteen. All in favor?
Madam President, if I could ask you some percent of a question prior to action, and I do sympathize with Joe being ill this evening, but if he could make an effort to attend the next council meeting, I would greatly appreciate it. As we get further and further into the fourth quarter, taking a look at the Treasurers report, the current time, there's about four hundred and, we'll say, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the general fund. Just doing a very quick look at what the payroll is per month plus the burden of employee benefits, it looks as if we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars a month for payroll and fringes, times three is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just payroll costs. We do have a police MMO, which is due by the end of the month, by the end of December, which is budgeted at two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which leaves four hundred and ninety thousand dollars just for those two items to make it to the end of the year. And at current time, the general fund is four hundred and thirty thousand. So just very quickly crunching some numbers, it looks like we're short. Um, if you could have Joe attend the next meeting and, you know, give us additional details and take a look at one some type of recovery plan so that by the last week of December, we're making payroll for everybody, I would greatly appreciate it.
Still do have the, uh, third quarter of the IT coming in, the physics in November, and your healthcare's paid up all the way through November, and we'll move in from that year. So we're ahead of schedule in the-
Okay. So there will not be a shortcoming?
So I didn't say that. I just gave you a number.
In three years, we can't, we carried over-
I didn't say that.
Score budget.
I have no other questions.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the tax receipts for the Treasury for the month of September twenty nineteen.
We didn't think of-
No. We're like, that's what, um, we need to add in the Treasury report. Okay. Is that a motion? I would say the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say it. Need a motion? We got three of them, Chris. Huh? We got the cash register. Yeah, cash register. Cash register. It's the first one. Make a motion to approve the tax receipt in the Journal, third month of September twenty nineteen, to certify, send it to court. Motion being seconded. We're putting the cash registers in the first one, Mr. Trump, in the month of September. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say it.
I'm sorry. Who, who seconded? I couldn't, I can't.
It was, it was that, the motion and Stan seconded.
That's a check. Sorry. Go to the fourth report, Evan.
Go to the fourth report for the month of September two thousand and nineteen. Total number of inspections performed, eighty-two. Total number of workshop orders violations and citations issued, two. Total number of work permits issued, thirty-four. Total number of license issued, fourteen. Total amount received, recovered, four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
I'm ready to go to the fourth report. It's ready by Mr. Poschak.
I think she's got the code enforcement report for the month of September twenty nineteen. Asked presented by Devin Poschak.
I'll second that. Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I say it. Police report, Chief.
Calls for service for September twenty nineteen, anger, three for total, thirty-two, nine, one. Eighteen citations for the Southern Court, forty. Eleven accidents, four total, ninety-seven. Eight deaths for total, one hundred and five. Seven to the Department, citation, three hundred and one. Twenty-three criminal arrests, which are clear. I'm sorry, for-
Sheriff's Police Report, the month of September, ready by Chief Chatsky, with your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Police Report for the month of September twenty nineteen.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say it. Fire report. Read that, please.
Fire report for September twenty nineteen, fire EMS report. Assist EMS three, automatic fire alarms, two, building fire, two. Fire report for September twenty nineteen, fire EMS report, assist EMS three, automatic fire alarms, two, building fire, two, CO alarm, one, motor vehicle accident, one, assist really parked, one, assist within, one. Total alarms, eleven, day, seven, night, four, total among members responding, twenty-two, average per person per call. EMS is a total of thirty-six calls, between eight hundred and eighteen hundred hours, twenty-two calls. Transported six, refugal, two, QRS nine, no staff, five. Between hours of eighteen hundred to eight hundred, fourteen calls handled by other departments, no teams, and so any more.
May I ask a question?
No. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So between the hours of eight hundred and eighteen hundred, it's like they're being paid, correct? Has they shipped, have they shipped?
That's not correct, though.
Yeah. And there was no staff, five times?
Correct.
Okay.
That's not correct, the times, what, the times change.
I'm sorry?
The times change.
Wait, did the times change?
It's up to...
Andy did the, he decided when the shift is.
So it's not, that's not true.
Yeah, wherever there's most, however there's available.
Yes.
I saw Ian choose that, and it was one block, so maybe block?
It's one block, yes.
Yeah, sometimes that's why there's one, two times guys were covered.
But still, this report is during a time when we should've had covers, and we had no staff during five times, that's incorrect.
There were only four people. There's only four, four, hey, four employees, four employees, that's what we've been asking, we got it.
Why can't we hire more?
Because it's in litigation.
Uh, that's not, that's, but, you've got a responsibility for public safety.
Could, could I?
We do, we do.
And Ms. Hall?
Can you guys come to the table and talk to the fire department again? The settlers? Because, I mean, when you, you have members of the firehouse throwing down ones in their truck, and one of them to the fire, uh, to the hospital, because they're waiting for an ambulance, that's sad.
Like in the nineteen fifty's.
Yeah, sad.
And there's no longer public comment, I do thank you for answering my question, you were saving...
I just, I just wanted to bring to your attention one thing, just to clarify, because you were absolutely correct, that the five times that the ambulance was called, it was not going out the door because there was no staff. However, you also need to keep in mind, it's just there was nine responses, only QRS. The QRS response happens when only one person is down the firehouse, you need to have two people to get the ambulance out. So, so, so hopefully, shortstop on those nine calls.
So there was never a time when a QRS is taken out, when there are two people available?
If there are two people available, the ambulance goes out the garage door. If there's only one person there, the QRS...
So the QRS is only taken out when there's only one person.
That is correct. So we're short.
Look, listen to the numbers, guys, thirty-six calls, our ambulance...
This is not public comment, this is not public comment.
Yeah, if you wanna hear it, you guys talk about it, so I'm gonna give you some numbers. Thirty-six, thirty-six calls, thirty-six calls...
If we had to like you, if we had to like you, we should be dying to die, and we're gonna tell the head money to remove us. If we had to like you.
Thirty-six calls, our ambulance only transported six residents. That's pathetic. Excuse me? Again, here, see? Yeah, that means that we not approved.
Okay, you heard the fire report.
The ladies respond to exactly what it is.
What is the litigation, during litigation, you're supposed to let us know.
I almost imagine it's all the...
First fire report, we're just...
Is that right? Hire a magnet.
It is scary.
Second. Motion being seconded, to approve the, to approve September, all favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, aye. Engineers report, Stephanie?
Thank you, uh, you have covered by report, welcome sign contract, we just have some, um, some more work that needs to be done down on Lake Bass, and all the founders have, all the welcome signs have been installed. We've been getting some land to be around, though, in some point in time. Uh, we did, last week, get notification from the Office of Housing and Community Development to, to, the notice should proceed, so we'll proceed with putting the, uh, the bid package together. We can see the twenty nineteen, uh, community development block grant, which looks like we put that in the packet, send it to O H C V. And that's what I'll ask for, give our, uh, authorization to do that project.
That was for the hundred twenty-seven thousand.
That's correct.
That's for the lining of the sore, septicomic block, so, uh... The, um...
Hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Pete...
I'm sorry? Two hundred twenty-seven thousand, correct?
And that's for work.
The Pico Green Region, twenty nineteen grants are due the end of October, the thirty-first of October. We're going to ask for a resolution to provide ten thousand dollars for the improvement to Marion Field, is that correct?
Yes.
To Don Marion Field. Uh, if I'm comfortable to consider that motion, I would appreciate it.
So I would like to make a motion for the Pico Green Region Grant, twenty nineteen, um, for the, the, the more fix-up on Don Marion Field.
Second. Motion made seconded, for, please, uh, do you hear a resolution change?
Will you hear, will you hear the resolution?
I feel that we're... It's here, so I want to just confirm that I, uh, project, then, and then the resolution. I just need a favor seconded for one of those project resolution, I'm sorry. Your motion being seconded, we're rather prepared, we have a lot of work here with the... I'm sorry. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, aye.
Um, just as an FYI, because I know the planning commission was, uh, asking a question, the Dunkin' Donuts is proceeding with the highway occupancy permit with PennDOT. They, at this point, uh, Mr. Body is not aware that Dunkin' Donuts has pulled it out, which was the rumor that was going around. So the owner of the property was not aware of that, so they are proceeding to get the, the highway occupancy and then reform of the product. Um, Alliance, you heard a little bit of what was, what was, uh, proposed, we received plans last Friday. I'll actually receive plans after the meeting, uh, the workshop meeting. We did a closer deal with those, found that there were some issues, sent it back to Boulder, received plans on Friday. Um, I'm hoping that they'll be able to give us a full set of plans, so that we can give them a preliminary approval. They have who forward with a lot of things that we had asked them to do, including the extension of, of Second Avenue, which is a vision for us to get the secondary access, get the trucks off of Seville Avenue, so they have, uh, they have provided that. Uh, the next part will be to get that through industrial highway, and then to Exelon. So we are moving forward, um, with, with that proposal. We did meet with LTAC and P A connects to try to, um, get some advice from, from PennDOT and the PennDOT officials, and and we did receive some, some good information from them, and with that information and the reports that they've done, you'll be able to get, uh, to put grants applications in and get approvals, because we have those partnerships, so that's a positive thing. Penn Terminals project is proceeding, is...
I'm sorry, Mr. Penn, can we go back to Elijah one bit?
Sure.
They, they came here this evening, I guess, expecting the council to take some type of action to approve their entrance plan, is that what it was?
Their full land development, their land.
Their full land...
They want the preliminary slash final, and we're not there for a final plan development. And as a matter of fact, until we can get some of the issues resolved. Right now, we don't know where the property line is. They have to establish the main water, flow water line, because that is actually the line from which they're gonna calculate all of their, their bulk requirements for the zoning. And since they don't have that, we're not, they're not able to do it.
So how, why would they come here with an impression that they had an approval? Was there, was there an implied approval based on any point of eyes?
Not that I'm aware of, they had suggested that they wanted to come to the meeting for approval.
Right.
I, I spoke to Max this afternoon, you know, this morning, I'm sorry, I was on my way to, I don't remember where I was going, Norwood. And I spoke to him for about five minutes on my cell phone, just keeping out his, my cell phone number. And, um...
How to do that?
And I will, uh, I think from a, from text, like, going back and forth.
Were you in the, were you in the planning commission meeting in the cell, last month? Who, who from council was in the planning commission meeting in the cell?
I was.
Mr. Walton?
I was.
Paul? Mr. Sagan? Council, council, President Reeves? This person here?
Yours was me, it's not where you're at.
That was not. It was live stream.
It was?
It was, and I, and I actually watched that, the, uh, after, after my meeting.
I got, I got a few concerns about the discussion that was occurring at that, um, meeting, because, you know, nu- number one is you, you weren't there as the professional services providing engineering support. And there, there's absolutely no offense whatsoever to, to planning commission, because I think you guys are doing an excellent job with the planning commission. But the planning commission was put in a situation where they had to make an approval for an entrance. And, and...
And you're really, oh, 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 we're perfect, everybody, okay? You have not been to meetings, and I have not been going everybody else's place and everybody else's.
Right.
And because of the election time, I'm staying out of everybody's way, looking at Democrats, to you, with the exception of all the Democrats over there. They have not given you one issue, it's just me blank, that's it.
I'm not giving you anything.
No, no, I'm speaking, I'm trying to explain something to you. So I have not been speaking to anybody else in the council, I have not been speaking to Alliance, and I have not been speaking to anybody from the Democrat Party. So this was not in fruition in any way during election time. I, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm explaining something to you, it's your answer in a second, you're just gonna address this whole thing. So when numerous people try to address these with me, putting Max in my cell phone number, I explained it, because the election time, I don't want to have any communication with anybody until this election's over. So this is no point in setting anybody to be played with, because, like Mr. Wilson said, apparently I'm getting paid my, my pocket, you have to fill, or you said me right before the bar, and I was...
Are you kidding? I never said that to you. I never said that to you.
Again, these are the reasons why I've stayed here, so at that meeting, they came to us several times to have approval. So at that meeting, we took the approval with the new things, understanding that the engineer has not done this like that. So that was us as a commission, not supported by anybody else.
Well, I fully understand, I also understand that you, as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and the commissioners that you have, that serve, you know, to your left and the right. You know, you're making a recommendation, you're not making an approval, you're not giving them...
Absolutely.
...the going, and you're making a recommendation as members of the planning commission, and that recommendation is in turn brought forward to the board council. Here's, here's my concern with what the procedures that are going on here at the table, is that I've got, you know, looking at a video, the fact that, number one, the engineer's not there while you're presenting the new plan, and number two, is that I have one, two, three, four members of council that have attended this meeting, and that's far. And, 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 maybe, 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 maybe in, in, in executive session, Mrs. Libertory can explain to council the issues or problems that you have when four or more members of council sit in a committee.
You did not sit together.
It doesn't matter if you sit together or not, it's just that... When, when, when the council president selects committees, the committee has three members. The reason why the committee has three members is because, under no circumstances should a majority of council be gathered at one meeting, because it gives an implied approval at times, and I believe that's what happened, is that...
But the whole reason why we started attending these meetings, because you, the liaison, Mr. Stewart, has not been attending, how many meetings has he attended?
May I, let, let me explain why Catania Engineering was not there. As I, as I reported just a few minutes ago, we had worked with Alliance, because we had, we had looked at the potential of extending Second Avenue to try to resolve some of the issues on Seville Avenue. We had asked them to take a look at it, they offered to put together a plan, they changed their entire layout of the property. Much better plan, absolutely better traffic flow within the site, they, it was, it was a much better plan. What we suggested to do, what we, I suggested to do at the meeting that we had with Alliance.
And how many meetings have we had, Mr.?
Probably three.
Okay.
Maybe four.
I'm not, number one, I...
But listen, Bill, though, just so you understand, so what they were supposed to be doing that evening with the planning commission, we didn't want the planning commission blindsided that they hadn't seen the plan. They were supposed to go and merely show the planning commission the new layout. That's what the purpose of them going to meeting, so we felt that it wasn't worth the effort of spending tax dollars for us to be there, because we had already seen it. That was the sole purpose of Alliance presenting that evening. I was very surprised that they, they requested that there be action taken by the planning. Again, it's recommendation, and, and in the end, it's my recommendation, as well as theirs, in Delaware County planning, that's going to, to bring that forward for action by council.
I, I have absolutely no issue with the planning commission, or the action of the planning commission. I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with the plans that Alliance has submitted. I have absolutely no problem with the new diligence that Catania Engineering has been bringing. My problem is that council should refrain from meeting in a quorum when there are committees. That is my sole issue, is, is that, you know, if, you, you've assigned committees, and your committees specifically have three people, three members of council who are assigned to a committee. The reason why that is done, and the reason why that has been done for as long as anybody can remember, is because when you're meeting in committee, there's not a quorum, and there's no implied approval or implied consent, the council's okay with that.
Well, if our liaison would show up.
If your liaison would've showed up, you would've had five members of council instead of four members of council.
Are we not residents as well, so are we not...
You are, you are a member, you are a member of council, you have all seven votes.
I'm also a resident, and I did not contribute, I did not contribute to the speech and call and video, I savored the hundred video, we can hear everything that I've spoke, everything that I said at that meeting.
I will let our solicitor, council, provide advice to the, to this table, to the seven members of this table, I'll let the solicitor provide whatever advice she needs to provide in executive sessions. However, it is, it is the, the cardinal rule, that you should not be having a party of council.
Also, the cardinal rule that the liaison should be present at meetings. How many have you attended? How many have you been, how many have you attended this year?
I think, I think that I, I think that I was...
Just take care of yourselves.
Oh, now you're gonna do one, okay.
So, you said you did watch the video, huh?
Yes.
Can you just explain what they meant by allocating the funds as far as supporting property, between where our line property is and industrial highway? The better change, maybe help the plan understand?
Glenn never accused you of any of it. So please stop saying that, because it's not true. It, it's probably more appropriate from a Catania point of view, about the allocation of funds to help the project. My, my issue, my only point here, and it's not the point fingers of the planning commission...
That four of us showed up, huh?
Four of you showed up to a meeting, four of you showed up to a meeting.
Four of us showed up.
That's my only point, is now, now, my general, get to a committee meeting and attend, and attending quorum. That's my only issue.
I have a question. Now, you were yelling in the house for talking about the EMS, what they've done is to reattack the council.
Yes, I would like to do that, please.
And nobody's shut them up.
I would, uh, I would ask council to give the authorization to, uh, have the historic marker foundation installed, and then the marker itself installed prior to the ceremony.
Go ahead. Put that in here, I put here, I'm sorry. You need a motion? You need a length break?
You need a motion for the historic marker?
Oh, place the marker.
And the violation replaced?
Yes. Place the marker. Yes, I'd like to make a motion upon getting our historical marker, uh, uh, put in.
Second. Motion being seconded to have the historical marker and the foundation corrected.
The Girl Scouts have offered to, uh, put flowers all around it, but I suggested in the springtime. This is a motion, are we in that? Yes.
Prior to, prior to you calling for action, this, this Madam President?
Motion made seconded.
Prior to you taking action, Miss Catania, is there any way that you could provide the, the board an estimate for the cost, so that the, the motion could include a not to exceed price, so that we're just not blindly moving whatever the cost would indicate?
It's probably around eighteen hundred dollars, but I don't know, because I don't have the information on the marker itself. So I know I'm gonna have a, have, in, all like with an eighteen inch, it's on it to about thirty-six inches.
I think it was eighteen twenty-five hundred, wasn't it? One crazy.
That's the marker itself.
That's the marker itself.
And that's already been authorized, and the marker was in manufacturing, I believe, I don't know when it's coming.
The foundation, at least the next, we're giving a relation.
We're wanting to put a sign.
Right, that's why we're taking that.
I welcome the sign, we're welcoming the sign.
I don't care what price he throws out, I just don't wanna make a blanket approval of, you know, saying, we're gonna pay our, our cost for the foundation.
I don't think it's gonna be that.
You know, if we, if we say twenty-five hundred, are you comfortable with twenty-five hundred?
I think it's fifteen hundred dollars.
I'd be comfortable with a price that exceeds twenty-five hundred.
Do you want to amend your motion to say that there was not exceed twenty-five?
Not exceed, I made my motion not to exceed more than it's about twenty-five hundred.
Okay, motion made, seconded. That amended in second. Not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars for the installation of the historic sign. All favor?
I.
Any votes?
I agree. And I'll answer any questions, if anyone has anything, I'll report it to the board.
Two quick questions that I asked on several occasions over the last few months is the Pico Green Region grant, the one that was completed for addressing the walking trail, otherwise known as the track around the mall field. Has that grant been closed?
No.
And, Ms. Catania, what information are you waiting for to be submitted in order for that grant to be closed? Or are you submitting, are you gonna close the grant, or is Senator Sente gonna close the grant?
No, I'll, I'll be closing the grant, we're waiting for some information, I'll give you some time, the engineers' time.
You're looking for, you're looking for time sheets, that's all you're looking for, and I don't understand why they ask the same question.
Time sheets, it was material and, and.
When was the, when was the track more completed? Just give me a ballpark.
August of twenty eighteen.
So August of twenty eighteen. So it's been a year and a month that, that more than been completed, and the grant can't be closed. My point is, is that it's not that difficult to grab time sheets and material costs and send it to our engineer, so.
It's, 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 it's the engineer's business, and he's gonna allocate that.
We paid, we paid the engineer those time sheets, it's, 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 it's part of the record, it's time sheets, it's all this.
Dean, I'll call you tomorrow, see if Doris, I'll call you tomorrow, get some information, so we can get this completed, okay?
And one last thing is, what is the Golden Green West Grant, does it then?
It's acquisition of park land.
Acquisition of park land?
Yes.
What park land are we looking to acquire?
Piece of property, one of these, still not.
Which property is that?
Uh, the Ola Trucking property. We're working on a grant in conjunction with the school district. This was a grant that was, uh, the only thing, the project just wasn't, wasn't named. The ordinance was passed July? July, was it July or August? To be determined for the project.
I'm just asking where the property is.
August.
Far across the street.
Right, across the street.
Right, across the street. So the ordinance was passed in July or August?
Yeah, the resolution.
Resolution was passed.
Yeah, the resolution was passed.
Or probably that was to be determined.
To be determined.
Mr. Sente, can you grab me the meeting minutes for July, August, so that I can reveal, because my memory is fogged or something, I don't remember that much. For July and August.
We have September, October, our factors, yes, of July and August.
July, August.
Michael, good.
Thanks. I may have been late, I may have not been there.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, round table?
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the contract with Brady Wine Valley. Or not pick up our, the spring law.
I'll second that.
Being replaced for another contract.
Motion made, seconded, to eliminate the contract with Brady Wine Valley. We need to have our dogs.
The hospital's a target, it's one thousand nine hundred.
A motion made, seconded, all favor?
Do you have a motion made and seconded?
Yes.
Mr. Sente, who are replacing Brady Wine?
Same, same. Contract is, it's the same situation with dogs. Four dogs that are there now from Chester, and come obviously to town, and respond to the dogs.
Right.
Caught by a dog catcher, goes Brady Wine Valley, sits in a cage.
Yep.
So, after so many days, they become unadopted, the tort fishes, etc., right? There's four pit bulls now, plus this four, four thousand twenty dollars.
Four thousand twenty dollars a month?
Thirty-five, thirty-five dogs a day, three dogs.
So, forty, forty-two.
Once they get picked up, it's about three hundred fifty hours, or then getting shot.
Okay, so it's costing us forty-two hundred dollars to house four pit bulls from Chester, okay? So, we eliminate the contract?
We'll, we'll. Those are twenty, twenty-one.
What'll we do when the next pit bull waters in, in town ends?
Be juke night, ten days.
Bye. So we're replacing?
We're gonna, we're gonna tell them, we're, they're kinda, they're gonna do this.
Our contract.
So for instance, there's a dog that's been there for four months, we pay them four thousand dollars.
Our contract says that they will keep the dog until it's adopted out, or the owner does it yet.
And it stays, it's so long.
So if it's there for five months, we're paying for that dog for five months.
So we're not changing?
You're not changing.
We're not doing it? We're just gonna kill a dog if you're pending, we're just gonna kill a dog if you're pending.
It's not that, it's not served, right, we're paying four months, if one dog's been there, but, and I'm, I'm, I'm not giving off the fish, you guys.
Right.
But it's been there for four months, so the engine car has paid four thousand twenty dollars for that. But, after so, so long, who said he come here to present? After so long, the dog comes unadopted.
Right.
Tort fishes, in a cage, you can't live it, obviously.
So it's still the same, it's still, it's still going to Brady Wine Valley, SPCA?
Well, they're the same man, right.
And this is what other, this is what other townships have.
Well, actually, they're on, they're on dog catch, but yeah, a lot of new places, but we, we gotta go straight.
Now Brady Wine determines whether these dogs are adoptable or not.
Yeah, not, right. And after that, so they sit, and sit, and sit, and know that they're, they're unadopted, that's what they tell us, they're getting hurt.
So all they do is pick them up and we take them.
Right.
They're in a hotel.
Yeah, they're in a hotel.
A box, it's like a hotel, it's a box. We're paying for a dog to stay alive in a box.
She said, hang on, come out, see what I have. Yeah.
Right.
They don't approve?
Well, they bring them, they're, they're gonna do a presentation, not do the presentation?
They said he did, he said, a couple years ago, they were here a couple months, they're gonna do it, but you know, you guys didn't agree on, but every other council did.
We're the owners, spending over fifty thousand dollars a year on stray dogs that weren't even on the.
Brady Wine Valley, they make the decision whether to keep it or let it go, ten days.
But the vet also said most dogs that are family dogs are clean, we're gonna make.
Well, right, right. These are stray dog kittens.
So we're still paying the same price?
No.
And then when you buy a dog. You pay two hundred dollars for a dog.
Purple.
The dog goes Brady Wine, SPCA. Dog goes Brady Wine, SPCA, the dog has ten days to be claimed, on the eleventh day, on the eleventh day, the dog.
Whatever Brady Wine Valley determines.
And they're, they're professionals coming in to train, see what the dog's like. They act, they don't just, they don't just treat them, they don't see them, they need cage for ten days, they don't. They bring, they bring them, a big area, see if they can deal with other dogs, and then they obviously can't for ten days, you know? It's wrong, my daddy's showing, would you want that?
What's that?
These vicious, I mean, they're vicious dogs, so.
Right.
Under contract, there was a dog where the, there was contacted and said, I'll be there tomorrow to get my cat, or my dog, and they, and we're on the hook paying for that.
With the current contract, you should know end to that, correct?
You've got your motion, you've got your second, take your vote.
All favor?
No. I like spending fifty thousand dollars, I'm not gonna have it on my class, just that we kill a dog, everyone.
Use that money for the ambulance, tell my dad, use that money for the ambulance, or a crib.
That would be great.
And you don't work on dogs, you're gonna get old people, and the, or the young people.
That would be great.
Jesus. That's awful. Use it for the people of the town, not a bad little doll. Round table, chief?
I got a few things.
Yeah.
Bring up. I don't know whether everybody realizes or not, but the president sits on all committees, and is responsible for all committees. That's what happened with the, um, the board is back in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. The president was on there, he didn't care about it, didn't push it until he lost the presidency, so it's just bitterness, that's why it's all brought up now. Another thing, there was two hundred thousand dollars added to the budget in two thousand sixteen, saying that we're going to get money for permits fees, which never came in, which made the budget down to dues, that's why we're behind now. Mr. Sente is good enough to make sure that he paid, knows that he could, and that every employee got their paycheck, each and every pack. Now, it's a little ridiculous. The EMTs, myself, I'm all favoring second shift, everybody knows that. But from day one, when the fire company came, the borrower asked to put the second shift on, they said no, the council did. Fire company offered it in two thousand seventeen for a six-month trial period. At the end of six months, the fire company put the forty, so we told them, we weren't done. The borrower was good enough to continue on two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand eighteen without updating the budget. Mr. Stewart was against that all along, and I understand why, because it wasn't in the budget. Until November two thousand eighteen, that's when he jumped on the bandwagon for the EMTs. I'm in favor of the EMTs, I think we should have a second shift. That's all I have.
Yeah, I don't wish for mayor, what was I in favor of or not in favor of, just so I have a clear understanding of what's being laid at my lap?
I'm sorry?
What was I in favor of and what was I not in favor of in regards to the EMTs, so that I have a clear understanding of what's being laid at my lap?
I have the borrower, I got the tab, all that, for seventeen and all eighteen.
What was?
Then, December two thousand eighteen, you jumped on the bandwagon, because everybody was here complaining that they wanted it.
You were against the second shift being paid to the EMTs because it wasn't in the budget.
And you know it.
And you verbalized that quite often, it did Mr. Stewart.
Not only, not only that, you also already got the, uh, those, the worst, worst.
It was the bottom of the strand, it was the first one, which is ridiculous, thirty thousand dollars.
I got you a question, I'll write it down, you told me you're in charge of the police department, why are you doing this?
I'm like, oh, what?
Bringing all this up about Stewart.
I'm bringing up Missouri bells, bring the thing up.
I asked you about the right to know.
You gave me right to know?
I asked you about.
I am not, I am not the right to know, Mr. Sente is the right to know.
And you said, I'm, I'm in charge of the police department. No, no, I asked you a question, you're in charge of the police department, right?
Yes.
So why you wanna have to handle all this stuff?
I'm just bringing it out to, so.
If you're in charge of the police department.
I'm bringing it to light that everybody knows what's going on in town.
Did you bring this to light, did you bring this to light? The right to know I asked you about?
What right to know did you ask your governor?
When he charged me twenty-five dollars, they tried to charge me, and you said, I'm in charge of the police department.
That's right, I had to take that, Mr. Sente.
You're bringing all this up, they got to write it to you. I asked you a question, why haven't I done it?
I acknowledge you're not there, right?
Why you look into it?
Why didn't, why didn't I look into it?
Right.
No matter what answer I would have given you, you would twist it around to your own liking, to make it sound that you liked it, that's fine.
No, that's not.
And I told you to see, Mr. Sente.
I did say it. He told to charge me twenty-five dollars.
Did you get what you wanted?
No, he told me, but to charge twenty-five dollars, a right to know, that's in.
I told him that?
He gave it in.
I told him that?
No, he gave it in.
So what do you ask me for?
I want you to look into it.
I told you I wasn't looking into it for you.
Yeah, you're doing it with Stewart.
Maybe because, no matter what answer I would have given you, you would twist it around to your liking.
Twenty-five dollars, a right to know.
You'd like to do everything else.
Twenty-five dollars, a right to know.
Okay, next.
It's illegal, it's illegal.
Stan, you got anything to say?
Yeah, I can thank Chief Jesse and all the officers, and I'm glad that you're helping, and I'm glad we're here to help us. I'm gonna do a protect us, but now they can stay. The other part I want to say is, because the cycle's walking down and out, I don't know when I'm gonna be back, it's in Bonja Locken. Steel plate under, I've heard it's been removed, and the homes have been. Like I said, we're doing the best we can, and I'll say it a hundred times, I wanna say something, that's all, we're here. Now, I agree we're here, I agree with a lot of things, and I'm down at the firehouse, and I'm down there all the time, not one person says a word to me. Oh, oh, I'm right, Nick, to our spots. Like I said, there's something wrong down at the firehouse, you ain't gotta look for it for me, Tommy, that'll be, you know, I'm.
I know.
I'm just free.
All you gotta do is knock on the door. I'm a little upset that none, none of you guys up there that don't belong to the firehouse, or have been sticked up for the firehouse.
You really think we wanted to do this?
Are you supporting the second shift from that chair?
You really think we wanted to do this?
Well, you should have came to the table again, we offered you guys forty percent of the.
When the meeting is over, you will get the answer, a lot of yous are gonna be shocked, dude.
Oh, you're right.
You're right.
You're gonna be shocked.
Well, not me, I know it goes, you don't have to tell me nothing, even though I'm there, I'm here too.
We offered you forty percent of the building, and you guys turned us down, and you told us we could take care of it.
Let me ask you this, is anybody who take care of that building?
What building?
He said building, building.
Building. Building, I'm sorry, I don't hear that one, I'm sorry.
You have anything else, Dan?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Um, I want you all to know that this historical marker is a true honor, and it will be making history for us town. I'm hoping everyone comes out for this, bring your kids, they'll be making history in town, they'll be there at a time of history. Also, I want to, um, hope everyone has a wonderful Halloween trick or treating, um, with the kids in town, um, and just be safe.
Can you tell me exactly where this landmark is located?
Right on the, where you pull into Walmart and end up drawing on the side. We, we wanted to have a beer eleven reception, because where ShopRide is, is where one of the buildings was, but because there's gas lines under there, we have to move back up there.
Okay.
Because then you might have on two ninety-one, because no one ever said. Sorry. Mr. Bo, Mr. Bo.
I have a question for Mr. Stewart.
Sure.
Did you, um, did you write the recycling orders?
Did I write the recycling orders?
Would you help write that recycling?
Absolutely.
Is there a reason why you left out the commercial process for recycling?
Because it was decided by the council at whole that it would be nice to pick up the beer bottles for the local drinking establishments. Because at the time that we were past the recycling ordinance, we were actually making money on recycle. It was back in a time where the single stream recycling was a commodity as opposed to a liability. So therefore, if we picked up more beer bottles, we would make in more money, we would also have a greater tonnage, which would be able to increase the amount of performance grant money that we got. Unfortunately, within the last year, which was, you know, well after the ordinance was passed, uh, the bottom fell out of the single stream recycling program. China quit taking our plastic, and India quit taking our paper, and all of a sudden we done, because it was no longer a commodity, it became a liability. So at the time that we passed the ordinance, we did our due diligence, we realized we were making money, so we would be able to pick up the beer bottles at our local drinking establishments, and taxpayers of any stone were benefiting from that particular action at that time. However, as time changed and the bottom fell out of the industry, it became a liability. If you would like to amend the ordinance to a limiting commercial pickup?
Oh, it doesn't have commercial pickup, right now.
It does have commercial, we made the decision that we were gonna do commercial pickup for recycling on the recycling day because of the fact that at the time that the ordinance passed, the recycling material had value. We were making money on every ton of recycle. We were making money on every ton of recycling that we picked up.
Well, we must, we must legally amend it because the one, the one, the one sign says is we don't pick up commercial properties.
Can you find the works out for that, if I'm seeing this out there?
Because we need to work that.
Great.
Did I, did I clearly address your question?
It's not anywhere specific. I moved it, then the sign is, says we don't commercial property.
Can you look up a copy of the ordinance for us and have it in our packets over our shop, so we can discuss the property?
I have somebody call, we said he could be canceled for commercial property.
We issued a cancel for the commercial property at the time, but I remember actually issuing additional cancel to the VFW because of the fact that apparently people like to drink a lot of VFW, and they were liking a lot of cans. It's one of the more popular spots in town, I think because their beer prices are a little less expensive than everything else. But that's the reason why, because at the time that we passed the ordinance, the taxpayers were making money by picking up beer bottles.
So we went, now we won.
Now, now it's a loss, loss.
I'm looking into a project, um, that I brought up in our workshop, many of you missed because weren't attended, so I want to discuss it again and bring it up. Um, I'm working on a project to bring information to the residents, um, to help with renovations for homes. Uh, it is for elderly and low-income residents. Um, there's different information from different programs and grants, um, that I will provide. I am in contact with Media Fellowship House, they've agreed to come out and do a presentation for the residents. Uh, they have an awesome first-time buyer's program to help any residents that are current renters and would like to purchase a home. Um, Eddie Stone is on our revitalization program, we are in that. Um, there's also programs through HUD, uh, there's other grants, there's like four different grants that I've been looking into. Some of these to, uh, repair your roof, get a new roof, um, keen system, cooling system, you can build an addition onto your home. These are, uh, low-interest, uh, I think the, the loans are one percent. Um, and I just think it would be beneficial for those who need assistance in getting their, their properties renovated.
Can you come next month and do a presentation?
Yes, I am working on that now, getting a collaboration to have one presentation with all the information.
Okay, if they agree, you can come with the next council meeting, just make sure that you're aware.
Absolutely. Yes, and I just want to thank, uh, all the residents that I spent time with this weekend, it was a movie night. Um, we had some great weather, and so, uh, the start of it. And then we adapted and moved inside, and I think everybody still had a good time. Um, thank you for those who came out. Thank you to those who volunteered, because they're the real stars of, uh, the night, because we can't do it without just. Um, and we do have a record meeting, uh, tomorrow night at eight P.M. because of this meeting tonight, it had to be pushed, so anyone who would like to attend or volunteer, please do so. That's all I have.
Mister Stewart?
Mister Fasente, or Fasente's plural, um, if you gentlemen would be as kind to provide the meeting minutes for July or August meetings, so that, um, I can take a look at how the resolution was passed for the Donald Greenways Grant, I would appreciate it. Um, also, just to reiterate my request from earlier, if, you know, Joe could find time in his schedule to attend the next council meeting, I do have some serious concerns that, uh, we do not have enough money in the general fund to make it to the end of the year, and certainly like the, you know, here isn't what, when it comes to a recovery plan. Uh, also, I'll throw it out there that, you know, the council wants to take the money that was saved this evening by passing the motion for the change in the contract for maybe Brady Yon SPCA, and take all of the money savings in the air market for the EMTs, I'm in full support of making that motion to transfer that money. And, you know, also, if we're looking to make it to the end of the year, um, you know, I ask council to take another serious look at some of the unnecessary expenditures that were made. Um, I'll specifically reference the house that was purchased. We have not done anything with that house for the last year plus. If there's not a long-term plan for that house, if there's not going to be a recurring investment for that house, certainly, I would support motion to sell the house, use it to either make a, uh, help for the budgetary shortfall at the end of the fourth quarter here, or even if you wanted to take that money in the air market for the EMTs, that also has my support.
When you were buying for the R cap grant for the municipal building, you were all in favor of purchasing that house, because you know how the R cap grant works, we would have to come up with the, but. We would have to come up with the match, and that would be part of the match.
Correct. No, no, no. No, 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 she's, she's correct.
Yes, I'm correct, Mister Wilson.
She's correct, she's corrected the fact that if we were to purchase that house after we got the approval for the R cap grant, we could use that money as part of the match. But you have to make the purchase after you got approved for the grant. By making the purchase of that house prior to receiving approval on the R cap grant, it eliminates the match money. You no longer use that expenditure as part of the grant match money. And that's the concern that I had about the house all along. The other issue is, is that the house, as far as I'm concerned, wasn't part of purchase as part of the R cap grant, because the resolution that I was provided by the borough manager said that after the purchase of that house was part of the revitalization program that I didn't even know we started. But that's the resolution you signed, was part of the res, you know, part of the revitalization. I've asked this question on multiple occasions. Mister Fasente, if you could add it to your list, can you give me a copy of the resolution that was prepared for Council President Reeves to sign? That said that the purchase of the property on, what value do you know the number is? Thirteen oh six, South twelve. That the, the reason we purchased that property was because of the fact that the borough was under vacant revitalization.
Does purchase as part of revitalization?
That is what the resolution that was provided to me from the borough manager said. Although it, on the night when that was approved, there was no resolution. So yes, Mister Mayor, I was all in favor of the purchase of the house, if the house was being purchased as part of the, the reconstruction of the municipal building. However, you had to hold on that purchase until you received permission from the Commonwealth to begin spending grant money. Without that approval, the purchase was for nothing, nothing. No, I think they might, prove enough of it. All right, you want one more? Why, why was Mister Orr charged a twenty-five dollar administration fee for a right to know? He submitted four right to knows, and you charged him twenty-five dollars for administration fee? What, that, that is, that is, that is a violation of the Open Records Act. What would you charge that, 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 the request for information is caused to reasonably for photocopy? We, we can't charge him a free donation.
Explain it to her.
Go ahead. What's the administration fee?
Administration fee, first of all, Mike is a contractor, he's not a boroughman for you.
What do you mean he's not a boroughman?
If you're gathering both information together, you can charge for the time it takes to gather information together.
I'm in charge of this. I disagree with that. I re, I respectfully disagree. I, I believe that the Open Records Act specifically says, you can charge what is reasonable and customary for the cost of. I was in charge of open records back in the day. You're wrong, Phil. And then the next question is, is, okay, he was, he was, he was asked to pay the twenty-five dollars. My understanding is, is that he got copies, and he didn't have to pay the twenty-five dollars. So if that's the case.
As, as, as a borough, you can decide whether or not you want to accept the.
No, it's a hundred dollars.
You can accept the money or not, you don't have to take, you can, you, as a borough, you can decide that, hey, you know what?
So what's the, so what's the, what's the policy? If a resident was to come up and say that they would like to submit a right to know.
There was a lot of time in, uh, in, in gathering the information that you want.
What was it, what was, I didn't know what the right, I didn't know what the right to know was.
Mister Orr, what's the information that you wanted?
I'll give you all what I got.
Twenty-five bucks.
That's me. And I said, "You don't have to do that, you know, you have a law." I was told.
No, right.
I didn't say that.
Come on.
Yeah, you didn't say that.
Tina was right next to me.
No, she wasn't.
Well, Bill Holmes said he, he told me.
How many times have you done it before? How many times have you done it before? On right to know, how many times?
Well, the other, the other issue is, is that you, you know, Mister Fasente should provide the service to other, to other municipalities. Is, are other municipalities charged twenty-five dollars for an administration fee for?
Doesn't tell me what you're requesting to know, though, that's what I was asking.
How many times have you did it before?
That's not the information I'm asking for, sir.
I'm asking that.
I haven't done right to know yet, I'm asking information, so I have the knowledge. The right to know that you requested, did it require a lot of man-hours? Was it just making photocopies? What is it, what was it that you were asking to know? It does matter.
You can't charge twenty-five dollars, maybe, because I contacted the right, right to know office, and the office told us you cannot charge the administration fee at twenty-five dollars, per request, it's against the law.
Okay, so if it takes an hour man-time, you can't charge what it costs to, for that borough employee that's taking an hour away from.
I'll jump into it, and then we'll come back next.
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking.
No, you cannot, no, and I, I'll use, and, and God help me if the ceiling falls on me.
So, so, so.
When Candy Metal and Iron was coming into town.
It's like a box of information that they want, it doesn't matter how long it takes.
When Candy Metal and Iron was coming into town, the borough was so inundated with right to know requests, they ended up having to, to hire additional support staff.
So who pays for that?
The taxpayers. The taxpayers. It's all part of the transparency in open government. Is, is that if, if, if any resident walks into the borough office and says, "I would like to see," fill in the blank, it's their responsibility to say, "Here, here's the book, right here, here, you can take a look at." You know, there's been a lot of debate, I, I, I got under a lot of fire because I sent Mister Wilson an email with the audit findings for two thousand fifteen, and I was told, "You can't do that." Well, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, it says there that he's asking for a listing of all rental properties in Edison. He's also asking for a list of all landlords, that's, that's timely. Also, the number of properties that citation for issues, the number of purpose, if you buy a borough object in two thousand nineteen, plus a net, that's a lot of information.
Ben, Ben?
Did you charge for the property?
I have a question. How many times have you done it? How many times have you done it?
None, that's why I'm answering questions, and everybody's not wanting to answer.
First time.
You're always, it's not the media information that I was asking.
Right there in the.
Was this bad?
Yeah. I want next month.
I just, to answer your question as well, it's just to repeat it so that everybody has, you know, an understanding of what your question was. Your question was, was when I was the borough manager in Ridley Park, and I was the right to know officer, did I charge for a request? And the answer is, if they requested photocopies, I charged something that was reasonable and customary for photocopies. I believe the cost was, and please don't go to Ridley Park and say, "He said fifteen cents," and it's actually twenty-five cents. I believe it was about fifteen cents a copy, is what I charged when I was in Ridley Park. However, I found that it was much easier. But it was much easier, and this is something that was, you know, was, was well-received, it was much easier, than when I took a request in for a right to know, and it was scanned in and sent off. I sent it electronically, I charged nothing. And, and, and a lot of residents, I would give them the option, if you'd like to see a, a paper copy, and you want to come to the office and get it, I will charge you fifteen cents a copy. If you want information sent to you electronically, I will send it to you for free. And a lot of them appreciated the free email, because they were able to read on their computer and print it in their.
Mister Stewart, who, uh, who came up with this point one hour?
I don't know, I, I have no clue.
You came up with twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, I came up with twenty-five dollars.
You know the law?
Yep.
And you, you're right.
Yep.
I like them popularly. You can make.
I have a right to know, she would like to do it.
Oh, so you can do.
They gotta be.
I would have had, if I could go.
No problem.
Oh, I'm sure she would.
One very last comment, and it's just, you know, I, I, I've, I've taken a bunch of punches tonight, so. In, in the conclusion of last, last week's meeting, you know, Councilwoman Reeves banged the gal that turned to me and said, "You are a," and it was a not very nice term that you called me. And then said, "No wonder you got fired from Ridley Park." Just to set the record straight, I was not fired from Ridley Park.
Why is that you can be told to us, though, right now, meaning that we're currently in the process? Or is it just starting? We said, we complained about that doing it, and you just.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Voice President.
I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. I think that for our residents, that is a long way to come, it's our, our EMTs, so I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, um, and to be the first to come to town, to borough, to implement this is pretty, pretty cool. So, we're going to implement it. The, uh, movie night, so rain, we'll go to recreation, everybody's happy, it rains, so. Um, and I just want to thank everyone for just being so quick to just move it inside and get everything going, so, um, really know these could be, so I really appreciate that. Um, Truck or Treat Friday night, there's a hundred and forty-one kids that I'm signing up right now. Uh, I think thirty cars and eighteen wheels, um, so it should be pretty cool for the kids. So I just wanted to mention that. Halloween, Truck or Treat does not replace Halloween, so if you want to give out Halloween, please do so. Um, because I know I would walk in around with my daughter, and, uh, I'll need anything, that's it. Um, we also have a huge response to basketball, so.
Yes, I'm still looking for a group.
So, um, ages four to thirteen, so first of all, pity ball, um, and then kids who need kids, well, a lot of kids. Um, I also want to thank the planning commission, and I know you guys are like, don't, you just thought that, you know, hopefully I was standing for it, and I appreciate you, and maybe you'll make it do it. That's it.
Now, I'm going to be a thank you for, um, all the hard work that you did in getting our, our police officer to work for under. And proud of you guys, wonderful thing. Um, also, I have in front of me, uh, a flyer that, uh, this is for Thomas Beatty, um, it's for spaghetti dinner, for, you know, Hades Hill United Methodist Church, on Saturday, November sixteen, from five to seven. Um, there's some meat, or meat and sauce salad, bread, beverage, and dessert, they got available. Adults thirteen and up, nine dollars, children five to twelve, or four and under, free. So, please help, Hades Hill United Methodist Church prepare the room.
For ceiling.
Oh, for ceiling? Oh, yeah, it's sunny. Help them with their ceiling, so we'll get some delicious food.
It was delicious, I've been there twice now, and we had a great time, everything was delicious, so if you have a chance to make it up.
And I have nothing else, thank you all for coming, and I'm sorry that you had to sit through some of craziness.
That's why I'm waiting.
I have a motion for this meeting to be adjourned. Motion being seconded for this meeting to be adjourned.